Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know why my videos not work. See, oh there it is, that's probably why.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Testing one, two, three. Okay.
All right, good morning, everyone. Again, we want to call to order today's meeting of the Southern University Board of Supervisors. Before I recognize Dr. Talbot for our invocation, please permit me to read the following statement. Before we begin, just to remind you to please mute your phones so that distractions are limited. Also, if you have any public comments, if there are any public comments that are germane to today's agenda, the staff is standing by to receive your comments, so please email them to us at public underscore comments at S U S dot E D U. That's public underscore comments at S U S dot E D U. Or you may call at area code two, two, five, seven, seven, one, four, three, six, four. You may also log on to our website at W W W dot S U S dot E D U. That's W W W dot S U S dot E D U. Click on the S U Board, then Current Packet. There is a link dedicated to the online submission of public comments there. We'll now recognize Dr. Talbot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, for this opportunity to be involved in this decision-making opportunity. We pray your blessing upon the Southern University system, our president, chancellors, faculty, staff, and especially our student body. We pray for the families of Southern. And now we pray that you would guide us in these deliberations, that we would exercise wisdom for the progressive future of Southern University's system. We pray for those families that have been affected by hurricanes and weathers, and we pray, oh God, that you would provide for them and bless them. Thank you for what Southern University is doing and has done, even for those who have been evacuated. We ask all these blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you again, Dr. Talbot. Dr. Belton Rollcall.
Yes, and good morning. Attorney Relich.
Here.
Reverend Talbot.
Here.
Attorney Amadi.
Here.
Mr. Bartholomew.
Here.
Dr. Davis.
Dr. Davis is, ah, so I'm, Dr. Davis, you're muted.
Okay.
You, you hold up, he's.
Mr. Frandell.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Gaines. Mr. Garvey.
Present.
Mr. Gilliam.
Here.
Mr. Halyard.
Here.
Attorney McGee. Attorney Shorty.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Present.
Dr. Tarver.
Here.
Dr. Whitfield. Ms. Williams.
Here.
Do you have a call, sir?
Thank you, Dr. Belton, and please let the record reflect that Dr. Davis is present. I think he's unmuted now.
Present.
Okay, thank you. We'll go now to item three, I'll entertain a motion for the adoption of today's agenda.
So moved.
Shorty moved, is there a second? Second by Mr. Bartholomew, although his phone was muted, I can read it. Is there any objection to the adoption of today's agenda? Any objection? Hearing none, the agenda stands adopted. Staff, are there any public comments? Are there any public comments?
There are no public comments.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Belton. We'll move now to action item, action item five, A, one and two. Request approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August the 21st, as well as the special meeting of September the 11th. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Tarver, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Smith, second.
Second by Dr. Tarver, seconded by Dr. Talbot. Is there any objection to the adoption of the minutes? Any objection? Hearing none, the minute stands adopted. We're gonna ask members, we're gonna try to dispense with some of this stuff globally because we've got two significant presentations that are later on in the agenda on our enrollment update, as well as our, as well as our scorecard assessment data. I know we've got some visitors on from the Baton Rouge Area Chamber and others. So I'm gonna ask if there is, if there are no objections that Dr. Ellis would speak on action items five, A, I'm sorry, five B, five C, five D, and five E. Action items five, B, C, D, and E. Got it?
Good morning.
Morning.
So, um, hold on, I'm sorry, I was. Trying to disconnect.
No.
In your.
No.
Before you get started, Dr. Ellis, members, would you please mute your devices? Please mute your devices. We're getting a lot of background noise. Please mute your devices. Thank you. Dr. Ellis.
I think that's me actually. Gotcha. Okay, I was struggling with my device there. So, excuse me, we've been in conversations with local businesses, particularly manufacturing and engineering, and there's a significant need in the Shreveport area for engineering technology graduates. Those graduates that would have a background in industrial manufacturing and related fields. Similarly, computer engineering and electrical engineering at the technology level is also a need. And then finally, related to that is petroleum technology. And so we are proposing a associate's degree in engineering that has three concentrations, industrial petroleum and computer electronics. The other two items here, D and E, relate to our existing technical diploma in airframe and power plant, our aviation program. And currently, it's a technical diploma that lasts about eighteen months to two years. And what is common in the industry is that you can break that up into an airframe certificate and a power plant certificate, allowing a student that may need to only complete one or the other. A lot of times, folks in the military may have a partial certification, or either those students that they start and stop out, at least they have part of the certification and can get hired, and then a lot of time aviation companies will work with them while they work on the second. And so that's the, in essence, we're just splitting the technical diploma up into two certificates and allowing our students to have two different exit points.
Yes, sir.
Now, I will say the thing, the thing I do want to say about number C, the petroleum technology, is that a while back, you all may remember, we went through Saks to get approval to offer any program on the SUNO campus or the S U B R campus. Our Department Chair of Engineering has been in conversations with the Department Chair here at S U B R, and that is the first non-general studies program that we would like to offer on the S U B R campus, the petroleum technology concentration and certificate within engineering.
All right, thank you, guys. Dr. Ellis, are there any questions, members?
Just one, Chairman.
Yes, sir. Dr. Talbot?
Dr. Ellis, will any of these courses be, for these various certificate programs be offered online or all of them on campus?
What we're moving to at S U S L is to offer every course online, regardless of major. There are some of the courses that are currently part of the curriculum that are already online. There are others that need to be developed into online courses.
Thank you very much, because in Lake Charles, Louisiana, you know, we have a high concentration of petrochemical industry, and it sounds like many of these certificates would be applicable to people in that area. Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Mr. Gilliam.
I want to direct compliments and commendations to Chancellor Ellis and his staff for envisioning a program of this nature. It reflects upon, now, some of you may have read this past Sunday in the New York Times, there was an article that kind of gives credence to what the university is doing. It says that these two-year colleges, or community colleges, which in a way this is, it's just a part of our system. It says, "These are becoming the engines for economic recovery in the nation." And I want to compliment Dr. Ellis and his staff for having this insight and the innovative approach to take this approach. This is also showed up by the fact that there is immense, noted by the letters of support that he submitted with these proposals, support coming from the manufacturing community, the community at large. So again, Dr. Ellis and his staff, commendations to you.
Thank you. Did that complete your comments, Mr. Gilliam?
Yes, sir, that's just Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing, hearing, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of items B through E.
Mr. Gilliam.
Is there a second? It's been seconded by.
I second.
Dr. Talbot said. Is there any objection to the adoption of items B through E? B through E. Hearing none, those items stand adopted. We go now to item five, F. Request approval of the College of Ag, Family and Consumer Sciences new logo, Dr. McMeans.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, the recommendation is a part of our branding or rebranding of the Land Grant Campus, that is the Ag Center and the College of Ag. And what we're trying to do in bringing this forth is to make sure that there's a connectedness of that tripartite mission of research extension and the academic or teaching aspect. And one of the things that you will notice about the Ag Center logo and the one that we're proposing for the College of Agricultural, Family and Consumer Sciences is the S U Ag piece, and we think that's very critical, not only to the branding and the connectedness, but also important as we increase our recruiting efforts. And so we're bringing this before the board today for approval. Thank you.
All right, any questions? Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move for adoption.
All right, been moved by Dr. Talbot. Dr. Davis, do you second? Being a good ag man?
Absolutely.
All right. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to the adoption of the new logo? Hearing none, item G stands adopted. Chancellor Pierre, request authorization to create a common law track for the Southern University Law Center.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Of this honorable board. As is reflected in previous reports and also will be reflected in our enrollment report, we have seen a large increase, not only in the enrollment at Southern University Law Center, but the enrollment of students from non-Louisiana jurisdictions. It's significant. In this first-year class, more than fifty percent of the incoming students are coming from places outside of Louisiana. And so, you know, at this particular point in time, we have begun to see a rise in non-Louisiana students wanting to matriculate through the Southern University Law Center. And we started a pilot program to offer the ability of those students to take common law courses and substitutions for our civil law courses in certain areas to get them better prepared to take bar examinations outside of Louisiana. So we have come to that point, that fork in the road, where basically we have to join two other law schools in the state of Louisiana, namely Loyola and Tulane, in that we have to be able to offer a common law track as well as our traditional civil law track in order for us to be able to better serve those students that are coming from outside of Louisiana. We always had a few students from Louisiana going to other jurisdictions, but now we have a clear indication that the Southern University Law Center brand has become more than just a very regional brand. It's become a national brand, in fact, an international brand. We have, we have also international students in numbers that we had never seen before coming to the Law Center. So it makes good common sense now to be able to address those needs and to put ourselves in a position where we're gonna be competitive down the line. And at the same time, we also want to make sure, because we have to report out bar passage for all jurisdictions that our students go to, that we have them prepared to be successful on those bar exams in jurisdictions outside of Louisiana. And that is why the need comes for creating this track and to get the board approval. And eventually, it may even require us at some point in time to rethink our mission statement, but we're not at that point right now.
All right. Thank you, Chancellor Pierre. Are there any questions? Any questions? Seeing none, Mr. Garvey, do you move approval of the item?
Absolutely. I'm actually taking advantage of the, the P I A program for the common law track, so.
Very good.
I definitely think it's a correction of students who have this.
Is there a second?
I'm second.
Then seconded by Mrs. Smith. Moved by Mr. Garvey, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any objection? Any objection? Hearing none, the item stands approved. We go now to item I. Request approval and authorization to enter into a cooperative resolution with the city of New Orleans. Dr. Ammons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, colleagues. The faculty in the School of Social Work at Southern University at New Orleans wrote a compelling and now successful proposal to the city of New Orleans for funding from the Wisner Foundation. The Wisner Foundation has been around for a long, long time, I think nineteen fourteen, to provide support for the city of New Orleans in areas such as education, human services, beautification, recreation. And our faculty wrote this proposal. It was funded, and our faculty and students will be providing much-needed support to families and children all across the city of New Orleans. Our students will serve as social workers, social workers in training. One of the requirements of the grant recipients is that we have this resolution in place that would allow the entity that received funding to enter into contracts and all of the formal procedures that are required by the Wisner Foundation and the city of New Orleans. And so it is our request, Mr. Chairman, that this resolution be approved by the board.
Yes, sir. Any questions, members? Any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Shorty and seconded by Dr. Davis. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the item stands approved. Members, I apologize. I got ahead of myself and I omitted. We did not address item G, the approval of the Strategic Leadership Institute, which is a collaborative between the Law Center and the Baton Rouge Campus. Dr. Belton or Dr. Chancellor Pierre, I don't know which one of you would should address this. It's item G.
Yes, sir. I'll address it. This is a collaboration and an extension of the collaboration between the Southern University Law Center and specifically within the Baton Rouge Campus, the College of Business. We have a dual-degree J D M B A program, and we have adopted the hashtag lawyer leader, and the College of Business also has a global leader kind of, I guess, hashtag approach. So we thought it would be good to begin an institute that starts dealing with strategic leadership and think about how strategic leadership is now more important than ever and bringing together, quite frankly, a number of the talented leaders just that has been produced by the Southern University system to talk about strategic leadership and others, and to create sort of short courses, webinars, symposium, any number of interactive-type activities that would bring light to the need for the development of strategic leadership at all levels, and also hopefully produce a revenue stream for the institutions and to take advantage of our ability to promote strategic leadership. In fact, we are beginning the series on Monday, the twenty-eighth, and featured in the series that will begin from September twenty-eighth through November will include Dr. James Joseph, Dr. John Butler, and General Russell Honore, among others. And we hopefully will be able to do this continuously over time and bring a whole lot of value to the system with this type initiative.
Yeah, I, thank you, Chancellor Pierre. I actually took advantage of this. Dr. Andrews was kind enough to send it to me, and I registered for it. The first session is Monday night, and I'm certainly looking forward to it with General Honore. We recognize Dr. Tarver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is for Chancellor. This strategic initiative, is it restricted or confined to law and business? Does it not also extend to public administration, public policy?
No, it is not restricted. It was just basically, what happened was that Dr. Andrews was working on it, and he said, "Look, I think we ought to partner. We ought to do this, that, and the other." I said, "Sure, I think it makes sense, so let's, let's create it, and then let's bring all the others." I mean, we're talking not only public policy, healthcare, it applies to educational leadership. It applies to every piece of the system, I mean, clearly. So we just wanted to launch it and then just let it take off and let it take wings and essentially go, go as far as we could.
Well, Chancellor Pierre, I'm aware that for many years, the School of Public Policy has engaged itself in leadership development abroad, as well as within the country. And it's been seen to me that some participation or taking on another partner from the School of Public Policy might be very beneficial, considering how many of your graduates on either side end up in both business and government, and it's sort of relationships needed. So would you give some thought to that, please?
No, that's exactly right. The point was, we just wanted to launch it. In fact, as we were doing this, I got a call from Dr. Ijeagiri in reference to the Executive PhD program, and we are essentially playing a role in co-hosting that Executive PhD program. So that is just another way to bring it all in. That's, that's exactly right. You're exactly on point. And to be frank, Dr. Tarver, actually, the reason I joined in is based upon conversations you have had with me and others about they ought to be something that teaches people how to be leaders.
Yes. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Tarver. Any other, any other comments? I will tell you regarding the Executive Leadership Program, it is very popular. And I believe that Dr. Ijeagiri and Dr. Belton are gonna have to figure out a way to expand access to that program in the future. For, since it was announced in the process for admission, I am telling you, I've heard broad interest in that, in that program. And so we're certainly looking forward to great things from there. And we have some people involved, enrolled, who shall remain nameless, but we expect straight A's from. So, Dr. Tarver, do you move adoption of item G?
Certainly do, sir.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Dr. Tarver, seconded by Dr. Davis. Any objection to the approval and adoption of item G? Hearing none, the item stands adopted. We go now to item J. Item J, request approval of an M O U between Southern University at Baton Rouge and the Baton Rouge Area Chamber for the Handshake Initiative to promote retention, job placement for Southern students and graduates. So we're so very happy to have. So we're so very happy to have, uh, the Chief Executive Officer of the Baton Rouge Area Chamber, Adam Knapp, who I'm told is on the phone with a check. So, but before you start talking, Mr. Knapp, uh, we will recognize, uh, Dr. Belton, uh, who will provide the appropriate introduction. Dr. Belton?
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and of course, we bring this matter, uh, before you requesting your favorable adoption of this, uh, uh, MOU between Southern University and the Baton Rouge Area Chamber. Uh, as late as yesterday, I had the great privilege of being joined by my colleagues at LSU, uh, and in, and with, uh, uh, the President and CEO of the Baton Rouge Area Chamber, Adam Knapp, where we launched formerly, uh, the, uh, Handshake Initiative, uh, something that have major implications, not only for the state, but particularly, uh, for the Baton Rouge Metropolitan Area, uh, enabling, um, a more seamless, uh, relationship between our students and, and small businesses in this area, where there's, um, it's mutually beneficial. Uh, certainly, uh, this program speaks to the opportunity of, of our students establishing profiles that, uh, small businesses and corporations for that matter, uh, could, uh, witness, uh, and in so doing, providing for them, uh, internships and, and furthering opportunities for future employment. And so we have today, uh, uh, Adam, uh, who has really championed this cause, uh, for the institutions of higher education, uh, in this community. And, and we are thrilled that he, he's able to, uh, join with us. Uh, and, uh, I would therefore ask that he just offer, uh, some comments in that regard. Adam?
Thank you, President Belton, Chairman Rutledge. Great to see you and, and all of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you for allowing me to, to join you for your meeting. Um, in metro Baton Rouge, I'll give you this context. Uh, we have seen over the last, uh, probably six years, five or six years, uh, a slow but unfortunately steady outmigration, a net outmigration of talent. Uh, and our concern as an economic development organization is that, uh, talent drives economic development in metropolitan regions across the country today. Uh, and so we know we have to take that challenge head on if we want to continue to see the metro Baton Rouge area be, uh, a place of a vibrant, dynamic economy. Uh, one of the perhaps most important assets we have as a region is that this metro area of Baton Rouge has fifty thousand plus students that reside in our community. Uh, in a capital city, uh, with a river and a great manufacturing industry, uh, our students remain our number one asset. And instead of see that outmigration, that net outmigration, which is not just of students as of the total population, we think the greatest opportunity perhaps to, to change that is to be really directly engaged with our university partners, uh, to help ensure that, that students find valuable, uh, paid internships while they're still students, uh, and as they're graduating or, or given every possibility to find access to a position. We engaged a research project with SSA Consultants two years ago and asked them the question of, of looking at how we can do a better job of partnering with higher education across our community. Uh, they did a great job, worked with, uh, Tamara Foster Montgomery, as well as Jesse Downs at LSU, uh, as well as our community college partners in Metro Baton Rouge, uh, and even our private college at Fran U. Um, and spent a lot of time asking employers, career services, college administrators, what their experiences were in this interchange between, uh, student, uh, and graduation and job seeking. Out of that, we were so thrilled to find out that, uh, that Tamara Foster Montgomery and Jesse Downs have been working very closely on this for a couple of years and had partnered to contract with a, a software app called Handshake. Handshake is a tool that focuses on universities specifically. It's a Silicon Valley technology, uh, that is really an incredible transformative technology, we think, for how students find valuable paid internships while they're still students and then seek those opportunities after college. Where we have failed as a business community is to live up to our end of this bargain. Uh, and our recognition is that we have to do a better job of making sure that more internships get posted, uh, and more companies know how incredibly valuable this resource is to them. Uh, we have heard from employers for many years that they wonder and struggle how to identify university talent that they might recruit. Uh, and so we have said, well, let us, let us see if there isn't a way to solve that. It turns out, your team, uh, and the team at LSU have been working on this project. Uh, Handshake, if you haven't seen it, is worth, uh, playing with. It's fun. You can download it for free and use it. What it does is it makes it really easy, uh, for anyone trying to hire Southern alums, Southern grads to be able to, to look for them. Um, where we see this going is a partnership where BRAC, as you'll see in the MOU, has obligations to make sure that more employers learn about the opportunities to, to recruit and attract Southern students. More employers activate a profile on Handshake, uh, and then it has, uh, some expectations for Southern to, to continue to use this platform and work collaboratively with the business community to try to make sure we are doing everything we can to, to place students into positions, uh, not only in the Baton Rouge area, but hopefully statewide as well. Uh, something that we think ultimately fulfills the, the partnership between higher ed and community, uh, here in, in our, in our area and across the state. Uh, so with that, Chairman, I'd, I'd say we, we are excited about this partnership. Our Board of Directors says that we see talent as driving economic development. The fact that in metro Baton Rouge today, only three percent of employers in the metro area have yet signed up for, uh, the, the Handshake app. Got a lot of room to go. Uh, a lot more students are on the platform, frankly, than businesses at this point. And so we want to make sure we, we do our, our job to make sure more employers are signing up for it. So with that, I'll, I'll yield and if there are questions for us, we'd be happy to take them.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Members, any, are there any questions? Any questions, comments? Well, thank you. Uh, I want you to know that, uh, CSRS is certainly going to, uh, participate in, in, in this collaborative. Uh, we make a concerted effort to, uh, recruit existing, uh, students at both Southern and LSU. As a matter of fact, I have a, uh, working on a meeting with the Dean of the, uh, College of Engineering at Southern right now to create or, or sort of strengthen the pipeline, uh, for engineering, particularly civil engineers to come and work in our company. So, uh, I think this is a, uh, certainly a worthwhile initiative and we're very happy to be a part of it. Um, is there a motion for approval, members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. All right, Dr. Tarver. Uh, seconded by whom?
Tarver.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, although, uh, is there any objection? Any objection? Hearing none, item J stands approved. And thank you for, uh, being with us today, Mr. Knapp, and don't be a stranger.
Thank you. I appreciate the invitation.
Yes, sir. Okay. Members, we go now to items K and L. As you know, annually, uh, we have to conduct a self-evaluation for purposes of SACC, uh, as well as execute conflicts of interest disclosure, not only for SACC, but for ethics. Uh, and the two items here relate to that. Uh, is there a motion for the approval of these two items?
So moved.
Been moved by Dr. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Who, who, uh, Mr. Bartholomew? And so, uh, Mr. Dr. Penning, I believe, will be, uh, either through the board will be sending these out, uh, subsequent to their approval. So please, uh, be on alert for them, execute them as quickly as you can so we can get them back in. It's been moved and properly to second that we approve items K and L. Is there any objection? Any objection? Hearing none, the item stands approved. We go now to item M, request approval of the scorecard assessment data by campus in year two of the annual accountability per SACC standard seven point one. Uh, Dr. Belton or is Dr. Penning going to handle this or is it going to be handled with each respective campus head?
Uh, Mr. Chair, with your permission, I would like, uh, Dr. Penning to, uh, offer an overview and, and, and make a presentation applicable to all of the campuses.
Very good. We would request an efficient, uh, overview. Thank you. Dr. Penning.
A brief, uh...
Duly noted, Mr. President. I'm not sure if the mic is on.
I think we can hear you. You may need to get a little bit closer, Dr. Or get it turned it up. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if I may, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good morning, uh, board members to our chair, certainly to President Chancellor, uh, all the distinguished, uh, members of our, uh, administration, uh, students, faculty, staff and alumnus, uh, alumni all over the country. We say good morning. Uh, quick, uh, comment on the previous two items, if I may, um, Mr. Chair, and that has to do with the board self eval and the conflict of interest, uh, disclosure piece. Uh, I spoke with, uh, our board staff, Ms. Tracy Jurel. She will be emailing those to all the board members before close of business today. We respectfully ask if we can get those returned back no later than Tuesday, September twenty ninth. Uh, they can be emailed back. The board self eval is a fillable form that could be saved and emailed back to, uh, Ms. Tracy Jurel in the board office. And the conflict of, uh, interest disclosure statement, uh, needs to be completed, signed, and please put that in the hard mail, uh, so that we can capture the signature. Or of course, that could be scanned and emailed back to the board staff. So please, board members, if we can get that by Tuesday, September twenty ninth, that would be deeply appreciated. Uh, now to the scorecard. This is, this allows us compliance with, uh, standards, SACC OC standard seven point one. Uh, we've had certainly a banner year in year two, um, of measuring the performance of the Southern University system, strategic through our strategic plans and for each of the individual campuses. I will sum up by saying that for the Southern University system, we tracked a total of fifty-two outcomes, um, across seven goals. And I'm very pleased to announce that the system met forty out of the fifty-two, uh, outcomes. So we also call them key performance indicators representing seventy-seven percent. And if we go to, uh, stay on this chart very quickly, we have, uh, the entire scorecard, which also shows you where we had the gains and, um, and areas where we have opportunities that were marked in red and those are areas that each year, each of the campus chancellors sit with their cabinet members and put forth corrective action plans on how they can improve upon those areas. We added a third slide for the scorecard, which is called by the numbers. And here you get to see, uh, if we move forward by the numbers to the system, very good. By the numbers, you see the comparison from year one to year two for the Southern University system. And if you can imagine, we saw gains in twenty-eight of our outcomes, ranging from total head count enrollment across the Southern University system. From year one to year two, we saw a six percent increase, all the way through dual enrollment, online enrollment, new first-time freshman, undergraduate enrollment, so on and so forth. Tremendous work once again by our systems president, Dr. Ray L. Belton, and certainly commendations to each of our chancellors that contributed to the compilation of seeing the tremendous growth we've seen across the Southern University system. Let's go next to the Baton Rouge campus, please. Next slide. For the Baton Rouge campus, and I will sum this up for the Baton Rouge campus, the Baton Rouge campus had a total of forty-two outcomes that they tracked across eight goals. And I'm very pleased to report that the Baton Rouge campus met thirty-one of the forty-two outcomes, representing seventy-four percent, uh, passage rate, I would say, meeting all those benchmarks. And if we can go to the by the numbers, uh, for the sake of time, for the Baton Rouge campus, that Southern University system keep going down after they keep going. So that shows us by the numbers for the Southern University Baton Rouge campus. Again, we see the progress from year one to year two, from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. We saw progress across eighteen performance indicators or outcomes, once again ranging from total head count enrollment, dual enrollment, online enrollment, undergraduate enrollment. I'm not going to belabor these, you see them down the line, but it goes across, uh, retention rates, certainly grantsmanship and, um, uh, tremendous work by advancement folks. Uh, not also counting the tremendous impact we saw in our fiscal indicators, and that was validated, uh, through SACC when we passed all our fiscal indicators for the Baton Rouge campus. Suffice to say that this work would not have been possible without the leadership by Dr. Belton and the folks on the Baton Rouge campus. I commend each of the vice chancellors, the staff, the faculty and the students for making this possible. Let's move on to the next campus, SUNO. You see the scorecard for SUNO. Uh, SUNO, uh, had a total of twenty-nine outcomes and, um, in year two, SUNO met ten out of the twenty-nine outcomes, representing thirty-four percent. Uh, if we go to the third slide that sums up by the numbers, um, certainly, um, a lot of positives on the SUNO campus, and I do recognize that tremendous work was put in making sure we got off SACC probation, a lot of work on the fiscal side. But nevertheless, from year one to year two on SUNO's campus, we saw tremendous growth in thirteen outcomes, uh, ranging from dual enrollment, uh, we saw almost a one-point-five percent increase, online enrollment, new first-time freshmen, cross enrollment, retention rates, six-year graduation rates, and you see the remaining, uh, outcomes and key performance indicators outlined below. Uh, let's go next to SUSLA, please. For the SUSLA campus, uh, SUSLA tracked a total of twenty-eight outcomes, uh, in year two. And I'm very pleased to announce that SUSLA met twenty-one out of the twenty-eight outcomes, representing seventy-five percent. And if we can go to the slide by the numbers, we can certainly see and celebrate with SUSLA the tremendous work from year one to year two. Um, a collection of fifteen outcomes showed positive growth from year one to year two. I'm not going to belabor the numbers that are before you, they've been submitted to you, but it does range from total head count enrollment all the way through and one that I'm exceptionally pleased, uh, because it shows a tremendous work. And I'll just highlight that when the NCLEX passage rate at SUSLA, they were already in year one at eighty-seven point five percent and they notched it up to ninety percent. And that's really commendations to Chancellor Ellis and the work of his leadership team, his faculty, staff and students. Go to the next, uh, slide representing the Law Center. For the Southern University Law Center, um, they tracked a total of thirteen outcomes, key performance indicators. And I'm very pleased to announce that Chancellor Pierre, under his tremendous leadership, again, his vice chancellor, faculty, staff and students met one hundred percent, thirteen out of thirteen indicators that either met or exceeded their benchmarks. And this goes to a lot of the items that deals with credential and you see the number of degrees, the passage on the Louisiana Bar Association, the placement of law graduates, and even the ultimate bar passage rate across the board. We either saw they met and in most cases they exceeded the expectations. And commendations to Chancellor Pierre for that. Uh, by the numbers, you see that, I'm getting, I don't want to repeat myself, you see the data right in front of you, but the ranges of, uh, increases range from everything from four percent in credential and all the way to seeing the international student enrollment. Chancellor Pierre has put special emphasis in addition to out-of-state enrollment, so across the bar, um, either met or exceeded. Commendations to Chancellor Pierre. And last but not least, our Ag Center. If we can put that scorecard up, please. For the Southern University Ag Center, they, we tracked, um, a total of nine, uh, outcomes or key performance indicators. And once again, under the leadership of Chancellor McMeans, his faculty, his staff, his students, his extension agents and, uh, the staff on the research side, they met or exceeded one hundred percent of those indicators. And if we look at by the numbers from year one to year two, we see the tremendous gains that we saw from their fiscal health of the Ag Center, all the way down to that which we closely monitor, which is grants, uh, proposals submitted and awarded, and we saw increases across the board. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, that concludes the scorecard, year two scorecard, uh, for the Southern University system, showed by the system campuses and the system as a whole. And at this point, I yield back to our President Chancellor. And I'm happy to take any questions, obviously.
Yeah. Dr. Belton, do you mind if we go to the board members? Do you have something to add to what he said, uh, Dr. Belton?
Uh, no, actually, I would, uh, welcome any, uh, questions or inquiries from members of the board.
Members, any questions, comments? Well, I, I see none. I, I just want to thank, uh, Dr. Penning and, uh, all of the, uh, the, the university leadership. This is, this is, this is a very, I don't know of too many documents that are more important than these, to be perfectly honest with you. The members spend some time with these documents. It really gives you a glimpse into what's going on by each campus and the relative health of, of each campus, uh, as well as whether or not we're trending in the right direction. Now, if you look at some of the data, some of us are really knocking it out of the park. But then if you look at some of the data, we've got some challenges in some, in some areas. Dual enrollment is down, uh, in some of, in, in, on some of these, uh, key performance indicators, as well as, uh, other key point, key areas where I'd like to see, frankly, some growth. Uh, but, uh, I, I know I've heard Dr. Davis say this before, the numbers don't lie. And so this is creating a record for us to follow, uh, to make certain that everybody is held accountable. So I, I want to thank Dr. Penning for putting this together. Uh, and I think as, as often as we can review these documents as a board and probe and ask questions, uh, the better off we're going to be along the way. Uh, is there a motion for adoption?
So moved.
All right, Dr. Moved by Dr. Davis. There's second.
Ms. Redd second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, uh, any objection? Any objection? Hearing none, the item stands, uh, approved.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Dr. Tarver?
I know you're getting ready to go to the next item. I wanted to, uh, move that we adopt items M one through seven. I wanted to move that we adopt items M. 1 through 7 in global.
Ian? Yes, sir. Okay, the personnel items, got you. Is it, I want to read, there are three public comments, Dr. Talbot. Is there a second to all this motion?
No, I, I think that he's talking about Ian, is that what you were doing, Dr. Talbot? Ian?
Well, the personnel items appear to be.
Yeah, on your, but you're right, Dr. Talbot. But we updated the agenda.
Oh, I got the wrong one?
Yes, sir, on Thursday to allow SUNO to receive the money that they received from the city of New Orleans.
So I made my motion, I made my motion reflect the N instead of M.
Okay. Ian, 1 through 7, is there a second?
Comment correction on number 7.
Yes, ma'am, I was going to ask Dr. McMeans or either Dr. Belton to give us the corrected number. I think it's 121 or something. What's that correct number, Dr. McMeans?
Yes.
Number 7.
In speaking with Dr. McMeans on action item N. 7, we are amending the salary from what is stated to 121.5.
Okay. All right, so is there a second? With that amendment, Mrs. Smith, do you second Dr. Talbot's motion?
I will second.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded. And I have three public comments, members, please bear with me as I read them regarding item N. Okay, the first is from Cynthia Ramirez. She is a member of the Faculty Senate. This is related to item N. I am addressing action item 5 N. As the Faculty Senate President, I would like to seriously address the pay increases for the faculty at Southern University of New Orleans. Since it seems we are no longer in financial straits, as evident in the pay increase for the interim Vice Chancellor of Finance and Administration, the faculty have not had a pay increase since 2007. The board had voted to give the faculty a pay increase previously, but SUNO's financial problem prohibited this. This is not the issue now, so please implement the pay raises as quickly just as the increase for the increase in salary for on administrative position has been pushed through. Thank you. The next comment for item N is from Dr. Mustafa Alasar from Southern University of New Orleans. I have no problem with Dr. Hardy getting raised. She works very hard and she should be compensated. By the same token, the faculty at SUNO are working hard and we should be compensated accordingly, do not receive a raise in the past 10 years. Those are the only two items that I received from item N. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any objection to the adoption of the item? Hearing none, the item stands adopted. We go now to item O. Request approval for credit for prior enrollment service Southern University Law Center, Chancellor Pierre.
Sir, so we have a request from two of our faculty members, Professor Mark Rourke and Kenya Smith, who had previously heard the faculty members at other institutions. Professor Rourke, most recently prior to coming to Southern University Law Center, was a professor at the John Marshall School of Law in, in Georgia, actually in Savannah, Georgia. And between that institution and others, as reflected in his request and his CV, he had 11 years of service as a faculty member prior to coming to the Southern University Law Center. And in accordance with the Board of Supervisors provisions, credit can be given for prior service if you so deem to do so and the request is made. Similarly with Smith, previously at St. Thomas, prior to coming to a law school in Florida, prior to coming to Southern University Law Center and Arizona Summit. And I think he had about six years of experience, although the, the board packet says four years. I believe in the letter, it should have indicated six years. But again, asking for some sort of credit, is my understanding by practice, if not necessarily by policy, that typically for every year of credit, it's kind of cut in half. Well, but it's within the discretion of the board as to how that is, that is done. I mean.
Mr. Pierre, let me ask you this, what is your request? Do you want the approval for Mr. Rourke and Mr. Smith?
I certainly do, I certainly do, yeah.
Members, any questions, any concerns? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. It's been moved by Mrs. Smith and seconded by Mr. Bartholomew. Any objection? Any objection?
Of course, sir.
Yes, sir, Dr. Talbot.
On the, one says four years. I think the chancellor for Kenya Smith said they requested six, but it's four years on the agenda. So which one are we adopting?
Should be six.
Okay. With that amendment, are you okay with that amendment, Mrs. Smith and Mr. Bartholomew?
Yes, that is.
Yes.
All right, okay. Thank you for the observation, Dr. Talbot. Any objection? Any objection? Hearing none, the item stands adopted. We go now to item P. Request authorization to initiate a focused search for the Chancellor of Southern University at New Orleans. Before motion, members, I do have another public comment on that from Ms. Cynthia Ramirez with the Southern University of New Orleans Faculty Senate. My name is Cynthia Ramirez, the newly elected Faculty Senate President. I am addressing action item P. The request to expedite the search for a permanent chancellor at Southern University of New Orleans. I agree with the urgency of the search because of S. for SACS concerns. However, I want to make sure faculty and staff have a role in this process.
Yes.
All right, is there a motion? Offered. All right, offered by Mr. Bartholomew, is there a second?
Second.
Then seconded, seconded by Mrs. Williams. Any objection? Any objection?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Yes, sir, of course, Mr. Short.
I would like to know when we say focused search, what exactly are we saying? Because it just doesn't say searches focused. Does that have any special meaning?
Dr. Belton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and for your inquiry. The focus search really provides for the administration to accelerate a process to identify the most able candidate for the Chancellor of the Southern University New Orleans campus. It empowers the administration to facilitate such a process, to engage with the university community, which we anticipate doing, and to bring forth a recommendation to this board without the benefit of having a long drawn out search process. Our aim would be to, again, make an announcement across the Southern University system and be deliberate in seeking out candidates for this position such that we would commission the university with stable leadership as they pursue reaffirmation of accreditation in as early as the spring 2021 semester. And so what you would be granting the administration is the authority to facilitate a search with the aim of being deliberate and focused on trying to identify the most able and qualified candidate.
So let me make sure I understand what you're saying. Focused is a shortening of the normal time period in which to look for someone?
Yeah, well, we will, we will, our aim would be to accelerate the timeframe. That does not mean that we will not take into account a position of being very thorough and comprehensive in identifying candidates. But as opposed to a national search, which is characteristic of a, in some cases, the hiring of an external firm, in other cases, the selection of a search committee across the system. In this case, you are empowering my office to facilitate this process, engaging in the appropriate due diligence nonetheless.
And why wouldn't we do a national search?
Why we would, why we would not? I'm acting, I didn't understand the question.
I don't understand the initiative. I guess I'm trying to flush out, we're saying we're doing a focused search. So I'm assuming we're not doing a national search. I'm just trying to ascertain what the difference is between this focused search and what we would normally do, if there is a difference.
So typically, when we do a national search process, when we engage in a search process, let me put it that way. A typical search process provides for the announcement, the publication of the announcement in a national circulars. In some cases, we have elected to hire external search firms to facilitate this, this process. Clearly, in many other occasions, we have in panel committees that are reflective of members from each of the campuses within the Southern University system. That is typical, what you would find in terms of a search for the Chancellor of one of our storied institutions. This process accelerates that process. It literally empowers the Southern University System Administration to facilitate that aim. That does not mean that we will, we will not look broadly across the country to identify candidates, but we would also look within to identify what we may see as best fits. And so your authority provides for us to be more narrowly focused and provide, or empowering the, empowering me, if you will, with the authority to facilitate a process that would bring about the ultimate end that we would normally seek with a national search. So let me also offer you some context. And as you know, this month, the early part of this month, we celebrated the work of the Southern University of New Orleans campus, particularly as relates to demonstrating their compliance with the principles of accreditation after three years of which they were on probation. So obviously, that was a major, major accomplishment for the university. Given that backdrop, however, they have immediately been granted the wherewithal to pursue reaffirmation of their accreditation. In fact, this month, I believe, they submitted a compliance document to SACS COC given indication, they're beginning their initial step in seeking reaffirmation. The New Orleans campus therein will be hosting a site visit as early as spring 2021. And at that time, it is essential, it is critical that we have stabilized leadership on, on that campus. At present, and as you may be aware, the leadership model at Southern University at New Orleans is limited or, well, is descriptive of many leaders in interim or temporary positions. That would not be seen favorably, if you will, by SACS COC. And so it is important that we stabilize leadership, but doing so with the aim of, again, trying to identify the best fit, the.
I follow you, Mr. President. And then look, I don't want to, I know there are other members of this board who've got much more institutional knowledge than I have. What I want to do for SUNO, and in all fairness to Dr. Ammons and to any other candidates, and in fairness to the, the New Orleans community and the university system as a whole, is I want to do whatever we've done in the past. Whatever we've done to, when Chancellor Pierre was determined he was going to be Chancellor of SULC, when Dr. McMeans got his new position, I want to do whatever we've done in the past. And I don't know if focus is suggestive of what we've done in the past. If it's a national search and that national search takes some time, then that's fine, it'll take some time. But we're going to find the best candidate that we can to fill this position. That may be Dr. Ammons. That may not be. That may be someone that we find somewhere else in the university system. It may not be. It may be someone that we find in a different location. But I don't see, I understand the situation that we've got relative to making sure that the accreditation is, is, is done well. And we've got some permanent people in these positions. But I don't necessarily know if there's a need to rush a search. I think we're going to get the best candidate if we take our time. I'm not, and I think you've tried to the best of your ability to answer what, what the difference is with focused. And I'm, and I'm, and I understand what your position is. I'm not sure that I get the difference between focused and what we've normally done, if there's a difference. If that's what we've normally done, a focused search, then, then fine. But I want a national search. And if that national search takes time, then it takes time.
Let me, let me try to jump in here because I'm, I am for a focused search. And we have done a combination of focused search, searches in the past. In fact, the, the, when, when you contemplate a national search, and I've served on, on the search committee, chaired the search committee even before I became a board member for the selection of the system president, which typically consists of a very large committee of people, a very drawn out process over an extended period of time. Frankly, we don't have that luxury here because SACS had made it clear they want somebody in position as the permanent head of that campus by this spring, period. And the focused search allows the president to facilitate these conversations in collaboration with the faculty as well as the university's community and to bring back a recommendation to this board. And we don't have the, and so we're not, we're not treating SUNO as a stepchild. We're not doing to SUNO what we have not done for every campus at one point or another in this process throughout this history. So I don't want anybody to leave here thinking that because that is, that is not the case. We got to get moving on this.
And Mr. Chairman, I understand.
Yes, sir, Mr. Short.
There's, there's always the feeling from the New Orleans community that, that SUNO gets shortened to the stick on some of these things. And if we can do a national search or, or if there's a shortened timeframe, I want to make sure that the, the New Orleans community and the student body down there, I mean, down here rather, and the faculty are involved. And if, and if we're saying they're going to be involved, then fine. Like I said, I don't have the institutional knowledge of some folks, but focus seem to suggest something other than the norm.
No, it does not. And I assure you, focus does not mean that we wouldn't consider somebody from Portland, Oregon to Portland, Maine.
Okay.
Just in a much more focused and truncated process to get somebody in place without the need of being saddled with large committees and bureaucracy.
Question, question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Question.
Is there a difference in the financial process when it comes to a national search and a focused search?
Oh, yeah, typically, you know, for some of these national searches, we would hire a consultant like we did, I believe, during the, I know when I chaired it, we hired a national consultant, which came at a, at a, at a fairly significant cost. I think given what we've been through at SUNO, frankly, we know exactly the kind of leader that we need and what we're looking. we know exactly the kind of leader that we need and what we're looking for. And we've done some national searches at SUNO, and look what we got, right? And so I think the, I think the institution right now, and this is not directed to any person or person who may or may not be a candidate, but I think it's in a very healthy position today compared to the, say, the last 10 years, if you will. And so I think we, we know what we're looking for. And I think that between this administration, the faculty, staff, and the larger SUNO community, we're going to be able to get somebody to come and to give leadership and build upon the foundation that's currently being laid there. So yes, this does, would eliminate significant costs. Did that complete your, Ms. Smith?
Yeah.
Okay, Dr. Davis, one second, Ms. Williams. We'll go to Dr. Davis first, and then we'll come to you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. My, my concern is that there may be people out there who are interested, alums, or people that may be coming from New York City, Los Angeles, California, or from Baton Rouge, Louisiana. And I'd just like to see the president chancellor of the system submit to the board a plan on how he's going to do this in the next two weeks. Who, who, who will be considered? How, how long this is going to take? What, what markets are going to be implemented in terms of finding people? Or are we just going to limit it to the New Orleans areas, the New Orleans campus, the Southern University system, the state of Louisiana, the southern region? Just how, just how it's going to do that? Because my understanding of focused searches, and I've been in this university community for over 45 years, and I've seen it go all kinds of ways. Mr. Shorty, Turner Shorty. And sometimes, all focused searches are not the same. They are not a homogeneous model. They generally tend to be done based on the philosophy and interest of the person that's doing it. So I just hope that Dr. Belton can send the board, or Mr. Chairman, a plan in the next two weeks, how he plans to conduct the focused search.
Yeah, I think that's more than reasonable. Now we go, did that complete your comments, Dr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
All right, we go now to Ms. Williams.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. When was the focused search done for a chancellor's position?
I'm sorry?
When was a focused search done for a chancellor's position?
Yeah, when was the last one?
Last one done.
I believe that there were focused searches facilitated in the hiring of a couple of chancellors at Southern University in New Orleans.
All right, members, please meet your, Dr. Belton's response was he believed that there were some focused searches for chance, previous chances at Southern University in New Orleans.
My question, though, is because we're hearing that it has been done before. Respect the, definitely the expertise of those of you who have sat on them. But when was the last one done? Because I know that for the Ag Center, we did a national search. And so to what Mr. Shorty is saying, we want to be fair to SUNO and definitely to the community down here that feels as though we don't get the same as everybody else across the board. So my question is directed to, when was the last focused search done, and at what campus? So obviously, it was done a while ago, because no one can remember.
So we could
Yeah, somebody was requesting to speak.
Yeah, Leon.
Okay, we can't see you, I can hear you.
I'm sorry, can you see me now?
Was the Law Center a focused search?
No, I think the last focused search was decided by Dr. Talber. I want to believe that that was the case.
I can address that.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I can address that.
Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Thank you. We did, we did have a focused search for the chancellor of the Law Center after having attempted to do a national search prior to that. By the same token, we conducted a focused search in New Orleans when we selected the last chancellor in New Orleans. Prior to that, the board held a focused search to name the chancellor which preceded our last chancellor in New Orleans. So that's about three or four such focused searches. I might add that one of the reasons that led to focused searches at that time was both time constraints, circumstances such as you face right now in New Orleans, where trying to make sure you have someone in place by the time the SAC's team shows up down there for accreditation. Otherwise, you're going to have to end up requesting a postponement of that, and that's very risky. So I thought that the greatest motivation at this time for the focused search was certainly to be able to find someone. The other thing is that we had a standard policy which requires us to have national searches unless, of course, we could decide not to, and that, and I guess this process is addressing that policy, which defines a rather lengthy process, both in terms of time, process and procedure, and of course, in terms of dollars and cents. So taking consideration all of those, I assume, Mr. President, that the reason such a request is being made is to answer all three of those issues of timeliness, the accreditation, reaffirmation process, and cost.
Chairman.
Yes, sir, Dr. Talber, wait, wait, wait. Dr. Talber, did that complete your comment?
Yes, it did.
All right, Dr. Talber.
My question to President Chancellor Belton is, you know, I hear the restraints upon us to get someone in place at SUNO. Could it be possible to provide for a search firm the information that this is a focused search, we need them to move quickly? So you kind of get a hybrid of what needs to be done quickly, but yet have the national search feature in that they would immediately, you know, get information out around the nation. And this may
Dr. Talber, we can't
Search that may be limited. So that's my question, I guess, to the president chancellor. I don't know if that's possible, but it's just a question, an inquiry, to see if we could get a firm that could help us with a focused search so that we would have a national input for candidates, or from candidates, whether it be alumni, or somebody in Portland, Oregon, or Portland, Maine, or someone right in Louisiana, that would apply for the position.
Reverend Talber, clearly, I mean, we have available all options. But the matter of facilitating this process in a timely manner is a critical variable to which we need to consider. I want to offer to you that, given your authority to proceed with, in this focused manner, does not prohibit the administration from seeking out interests from candidates across this country. And that would be our aim. Certainly, we would, certainly, without a doubt, we would want to engage with members of this body, certainly stakeholders in New Orleans, the faculty and students of the New Orleans campus, just to ascertain what leadership model they think is most appropriate, and to solicit nominations and candidates from whoever may well be interested. We are being sensitive, as has been pointed out, to the cost of facilitating this. And we are confident that we could identify an aspiring leader who would constitute the greatest fit for the university by way of the authority that you would grant to, to, to this office. So while, and as has been communicated, while there are a lot of options of going forth, it was in my judgment that, that we move in an expedited way, however, one that is thorough, one that would engage the higher education community in a manner that would enable us to meet our goals while at the same time identifying the most comparable fit for that leadership role.
All right, any other additional questions or comments on this item?
So, yes, Mr. Chairman.
I guess, okay, whoa, 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 we got a couple of people talking. Dr. Talber, did that conclude your comment?
Well, I guess what the president is saying in summary is, in his wisdom, he does not think it's necessary for a search firm to help us facilitate even a focused search. Is that what you're saying, President Belton?
It would be, it would be my wish that we do not have to be dependent upon a search firm, and that you, again, empower this administration to facilitate this process.
All right.
I'm finished, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shorty, I believe you were attempting to speak again?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I think I could, I can be made a little bit more comfortable if we can go to Mr. Davis's suggestion, Dr. Davis's suggestion. If the president could give us some parameters of what a focused search would entail, what he's going to do in that search, I think I could be a little bit more comfortable with going along with this, as long as I know that the community is going to be involved and that we're going, where are we going to look geographically? How are we advertising for the position and that sort of thing? And I think that'll get me to where I'm comfortable on this.
How about we do this, Mr. Shorty? Instead of relying on Dr. Belton to tell us, how about we style the motion where we direct him? And the motion to authorize the focused search should include a directive that we will solicit candidates for this position nationally. One, two, that this process will enjoy the involvement of the faculty, staff, students, and larger Southern University at New Orleans community. And three, that within the next seven days, Dr. Belton shall provide the board with a written update as to how he plans to undertake this. Does that satisfy your concern?
Yes, sir.
All right, now, that motion, the motion to approve item P was previously moved by Ms. Williams and seconded by somebody. Are you okay with that amendment to the motion?
I actually didn't move it, I seconded, but as a second I do approve, Mr. Bartholomew moved it.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Bartholomew, are you okay with, are you okay with those caveats to the motion?
Yes, I am.
Members, we understand what the motion is. Is there any objection? Any objection? Hearing none, the item stands approved. All right, we go now to item Q. Request approval of use agreement between Southern University and Aniam College, Baton Rouge Student Housing LLC, Dr. Belton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We're going to have the general counsel to respond to this action item.
Yes.
Good morning, Chairman Rutledge, honorable board members and staff. I'm Jerry Gath, Associate General Counsel for the Southern University System. And the Baton Rouge Student Housing LLC, they're the owners of the Palisades Housing Facility, which is located on Scenic Highway next to the Southern University Baton Rouge campus. Baton Rouge Student Housing, they desire to use a portion of Southern University's name in connection with the operation of its facilities. Specifically, the agreement grants the owner the right to bear the name at Southern University in its new company name. Our office has been in communication with the owner, and they're undecided with the exact name, but they've narrowed their options to either the Amplify at Southern University or the Cadence at Southern University. The agreement also provides that the owner shall not exercise the right to bear Southern's name in a manner which is materially detrimental or inconsistent with Southern University or would otherwise damage the reputation of the university. If there is a breach, of course, Southern can terminate the agreement, provided we allow the owner to remedy said breach. Additionally, the agreement provides that S U B R should not have any liability arising out of the owner's use of the name. And nothing contained in the agreement shall be construed to place both parties in any type of relationship as partners, or principal, principals, or agents, or joint ventures. The term of the agreement is for five years, and it's now before the board for final approval. The general counsel's office has reviewed the use agreement, and we don't foresee any issues that should preclude the board's approval of the agreement. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you. And welcome. I don't think many of us have had an opportunity to meet you yet. Members, are there any, are there any questions or concerns about what's been presented? Is there a motion? Is there a motion for approval of item Q?
Offer.
All right, it's moved by Mr. Bartholomew and seconded by Mr. Hilliard. Any objection? Any objection? Hearing none, the item stands approved. We now go to, oh, wait a second, members. I just received two public comments regarding item regarding the previous item. These two comments are from Ms. Shakita Wilson. She's in the Library Department at Southern University in New Orleans. I request that all deans and directors at SUNO be allowed to be a lead part of the search process for chancellor. Her second comment is, this is a general public comment about SUNO. Why are we not informed of board meetings? This current meeting included important details affected us, affecting us. We were not informed. We had to Google and search to find this meeting linked via YouTube. Ms. Wilson, the on-the-board's agenda, website, rather, is a listing of each board meeting. I invite you to go to the, to the website, and to the extent that a meeting's date has changed or moved due unforeseen circumstances, the website is immediately updated. And so if you go to the website, Southern University Board of Supervisors, you can see all future meeting dates and times listed there. And you can also access the agenda, as well as the backup information at that website. Thank you for your comments. We go now to item R, resolutions, Dr. Williams.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Our September 2020 resolutions are as follows. Martha Ellen Washington Belton family. Ms. Martha Ellen Washington was the mother of our president chancellor, Dr. Ray Belton. She was recognized as the first African American to have assumed the role as histologist in the state of Louisiana, and later was instrumental in developing an associate of applied science degree program in histology at Southern University at Shreveport. She passed away on September 12, 2020. Our condolences to the Louis Clark Brock family. Mr. Louis Clark Brock was affectionately known as Lou Brock. He attended Southern University from 1957 to 1959. He was an advocate for Southern University and helped lead the Jags to the NAIA championship his junior season. He passed away on September 6, 2020. Our condolences also to the Ramona D. Bynum family. Ms. Ramona Deborah Bynum, fondly known as Mackie, retired from Southern University in the Nelson Mandela College of Government and Social Services. She passed away on September 20, 2020. Condolences also to the Kealan Denine Dillard family. Ms. Kealan Denine Dillard was the daughter of Officer Bo Dillard, was an officer with the Southern University Police Department. He passed away on August 17, 2020. Our condolences are also extended to the Noel Franklin family. Mr. Noel Franklin was a loyal Southern University supporter. He was a transporter for numerous Southern University events throughout the years. He passed away on September 8, 2020. And finally, condolences to the William Henry Papa Weston family. Mr. William Henry Weston retired from Southern University Baton Rouge after 35 years as a ground supervisor. He was a huge fan of Southern University football, where he supported the team by traveling to the games. Passed away on August 29, 2020. Mr. Chair, this concludes our resolutions for the month of September.
Williams, I'd like to add one. I don't know if we did this at our last meeting or not, Michael Guess. He is a graduate of Southern University. Both he and his wife Brenda, he unexpectedly passed away about three weeks ago. And I would certainly like to add his name to that list, please. Michael Guess, G U E S S. Somebody was trying to get my attention, I apologize.
Talbot.
Dr. Talbot, yes, sir.
I would like to add the aunt of our board member, Mr. Raymond Fondale. Her name is Mary Ella Lewis Semien, Mary Ella Fondale Semien. And she is the, was one of the co-founders of Semien Lewis Marchiere in Jennings. She's being finalized this weekend.
Okay, thank you. Our condolences to Mr. Fondale and his family. Any others?
I would like to add, Mary Ann Gordon O'Raugh, a graduate of Southern University in Baton Rouge and a graduate of SUNO. She passed away about two weeks ago. And I would just like to add her name. She's, she isn't a alum of Southern University. From Amy, Louisiana.
Yes, man, God's country. Yes, thank you, Ms. Any other, any other additions? Any other additions? So is there a motion, Mrs. Smith moves with the addition so noted herein for the adoption of the resolution and it's seconded by Dr. Talbot. Is there any objection to the adoption of the resolutions? Hearing none, the resolutions stand adopted. All right, we're moving right along. We've got informational item six, Fall 2020 Enrollment Update by Campus. Members, I would strongly encourage those of you who have time. There was a very interesting meeting of the Board of Regents in which Dr. Belton and I believe Mr. McClinton participated on last week, where Southern, along with the other state systems, presented their enrollment data and information. It was a wonderful meeting, great job to Dr. Belton and Mr. McClinton, who accompanied Dr. Belton and did nothing in particular, but did it very well. And the report given by Southern University System was very, very well received by the members of the Board of Regents, and I thought you'd be interested to know what those comments were. So at this time, Dr. Belton, are we turning this over to Dr. Penning again?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'll ask Dr. Penning if he would offer the report, enrollment report for Baton Rouge in particular. And then the chancellors will, from each of the campuses, will elaborate on on their enrollment report.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Before we begin, Dr. Penning, we recognize Mr. Gillum.
The enrollment report, and please to, by the way, my apologies, just as I picked the microphone up to speak, it seems like my yard man has come in and you'll hear him in the background. So I'll make a statement and then I'll mute myself, Mr. Chairman. I would like to ask too, as these enrollment reports are given, go kind of slow and methodically with me, if you will, chancellors of the various campuses, because the enrollment reports that appear were the only parts of our agenda today that was not included in the 270, no, 237 pages that we had. And immediately following, of course, these enrollment reports, Mr. Chairman, we're going to be looking at the financial reports, which we have. So subsequently, I have looked at those and as I looked at those and analyzed them, I'd like to see that the enrollment reports are in sync with the budget financial statements that are going to follow. For for instance, on the New Orleans campus, it looks like there's going to be a financial shortfall or of something like 242, Reddit, $243,000. I'd like to see if indeed the enrollment figures sync with that. By the same token, on the Shreveport campus, it looks like they may have, or they're projecting a shortfall of something like 1.1 million. And I want to see if indeed the enrollment figures are in sync with those numbers. That's a totality, Mr. Chairman, of my observation. I'll go ahead and mute myself again.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gillum. And hopefully, either Dr. Penning or Dr. Belton or Dr. Ellis can address your concerns, Mr. Gillum, at the appropriate time. Dr. Penning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I believe, Marcus, you're going to put that slide up, please, or Chlorid. For this Baton Rouge campus. And if we can just enlarge it, put it on full, full view. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So before you have you the preliminary Fall 2020 Enrollment Report, what we typically refer to as the census report for the Southern University Baton Rouge campus. This preliminary report is a snapshot at the census time, which was just a day ago, and reflects quite candidly both the strengths and also the opportunities for the Southern University Baton Rouge campus. Overall, if you look at the very bottom, and I will attempt to be expeditious, but also be thorough. If you look on the very bottom for Fall 2019, at the same time last year, right around the same date, right around, I believe it was September 25, we reported 7,031 students concurrent.
Let me ask you, let me ask you this, I apologize for interrupting you. But is there a way that you can share your screen such that members can see the document that you are specifically?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, and Chlorid is making that happen right now. Marcus, I will pause. Give me the thumbs up when the screen is available to members.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will pause until Marcus gives me the thumbs up. Ask him if they can see it. Mr. Chairman, being.
We can see, I can see, we can see, I think everybody should be able to see it.
Very good, thank you. As I stated, this is the preliminary Fall 2020 report for the Southern University Baton Rouge campus. And it compares a snapshot of where Baton Rouge was in Fall 2019 at this same time. And if you look on the very bottom, that was 7,031 students. In Fall 2020, we reported 7,091 students, which is a net positive increase of 60 students. Or as a percentage, point 09, we can round that to a 1% increase in enrollment. As I stated earlier, I believe this report quite candidly reflects both strengths and opportunities for the Baton Rouge campus. And let me highlight a few of those strengths. In the area of dual enrollment, taking a snapshot of where we were in Fall 2019, we were at 413, 413 students. Fall of 2020, we had 575 students, which represents a net positive increase of 162 students or a 39% increase in dual enrollment. New first time students, new first time freshmen. Fall of 2019, 1337. Fall of 2020, 1532, representing a net increase of 195 students or a 14.6, we can round it to a 15% increase in new first time students on the Baton Rouge campus. The same for readmit, we saw an increase there from 160 to 165. Transfer students from 317 to 334 students. And even online students as, and due to the new normal, as we translate more of our face-to-face programs to the online platform, we expect and we're beginning to see that trend. We expect to see more of that of our students in the online portal. As I indicated, on the other side of the ledger, there are also tremendous opportunities for the Baton Rouge campus for improvements. And that is reflected, and I'll touch on on three of those categories. For continuing undergraduate students, we see a slight decrease of 110 students, representing a decrease of 3.1%. Certainly, an area of opportunity for us to to come a little stronger as we work through the semester. In continuing graduate students, we see a decrease of 111 students, representing a net decrease of 21%. And I'll close with adult learners. We recorded in 2019, 867 students. Fall 2020, 583 students, representing a net decrease of 32%. We know this is a critical category. While we aced dual enrollment, this is an area for opportunity for us to grow because both are equally reflected in the outcomes-based funding formula. So as I close, broadly speaking, this is a preliminary enrollment report. The numbers will be taken once again, will be formally recorded at the end of the semester, which will be reported to the Board of Regents in January. And that will represent the end of semester report, which quite frankly is the final report that is recorded on the scorecards each year. And the end of semester report is what ultimately becomes the official record for the Southern University Baton Rouge campus. I will stop here. Mr. Chairman, I will yield back to you if there are any questions, President Chancellor, I yield back to you also.
Right, if if I may add, Mr. Chair and and members, this enrollment report also reflects, in many ways, the reality of, the reality and impact of COVID-19. In these numbers, it is telling that individuals who found themselves vulnerable have elected to not return for the fall, particularly as it relates to undergraduates aged 25 years and above. We have received inputs from that population that says that they were going to use this year as a gap year in light of their perception of of safety. Generalize that as well to continuing graduate students, again, individuals who reportedly are are over the age of 25. It also, and I think you will see that across the campuses, but I I should also share with you how challenging this semester has been. We have used an inordinate amount of CARES dollars to help support students' matriculation to our campuses this fall. In many cases, even for continuing undergraduate students and freshmen, we have taken the dollars that we have received from the CARES Act to provide for them emergency grants such that they can enroll on our campus. I would add that that is ongoing. Dr. Penning may have mentioned that our Fall 2019 enrollment of 7,0031 reflects our enrollment at this time last year, our preliminary enrollment, our ultimate enrollment for Fall of 2019 was 7,140. So this is a snapshot of where we are in comparison to the Fall of 19. But we anticipate and we are hopeful that that number will continue to grow toward the end of this year. And again, reflects our ongoing effort to try to respond to students who have given indication that their financial position has changed. And our work, our ongoing work to just try to help them out nonetheless. That's all I would add, Mr. Chair and members. If you have any questions, we we welcome the opportunity to respond to them at this time.
Thank you, members. Any questions or comments regarding the enrollment update for the Baton Rouge campus? Before we move on to the Law Center, any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I do have a comment. Doctor, question first, Doctor Penning, am I, did I read that correctly in the backup? That our, the universe of online students, and I'm not talking about our virtual platform that we had to transition to as a result of COVID, but our online is 213 students?
That is correct. And, Mr. Chairman, the definition of an online student is a student who is matriculating in a major that is offered 100% online. So it's not students who simply are taking online classes due to COVID. And that's where the big push is to translate more of our existing majors to the 100% online platform whereby they can be 100% online students.
So let's forget about, let's forget about COVID for a second.
Yes, sir.
All right. And we see enrollment data from an online standpoint. You can go to the Board of Regents where where some of our sister institutions in this state have thousands of people in their online.
That is correct.
Well, and you're telling me we've got, we still have 213.
Yes, sir, that is what the number is right now.
And I've been, I've been, I've been, I've been commenting and been very critical about this from day one, becoming a member of this board, Dr. Belton. Because the buck stops with you. That is embarrassingly low. And I've been hearing for the last two or three years about we're working on it, we've got a plan coming, we've got this and we've got that, and we are still languishing at 213 students. I, for me, just one board member, that is unacceptable. That's unacceptable. And I would like to see some, I would like to see from you. I'm requesting a written plan to be provided to this board within the next 30 days about how you are going to increase our online enrollment capacity. It is, it's no longer the wave of the future, it's it's yesterday. And there's tremendous, that that program can have tremendous financial impact on the institution aside from inviting an opportunity for non-traditional students also. But something is not working. I don't know who's giving leadership to it. I don't know who who's in what seat on the bus, but something is wrong. And I don't see any imagination with it. I don't see, it's embar, I would be embarrassed if I were responsible for this to say we've got 200 students in our system, from the Baton Rouge campus alone in this program. So I would respectfully request, Dr. Belton, from you, something in writing within the next 30 days about how we plan to invest in this very important program for the institution.
You will have it. And and I would, I would acknowledge that you have challenged us in the past to bring a concerted focus on that. And your comments are on point. And we will provide such a report. And if you prefer, we will include that as an agenda item such that we could present.
Why don't we agree right now that that would be an agenda item for October? And please provide our board with the report in as quickly as you possibly can, so we can have the benefit of it far in advance of the meeting.
We'll do it.
Thank you. So we will go now to, there were no questions or comments on S U B R. Okay, we'll go now to the Southern University Law Center, Dr. Penning.
I I think we're going to, Mr. Chair, we're asking the chancellors.
That's the P R, no problem.
Yes, I'll wait for them to put the information on the screen so it can be shared. And can can you all see the screen, Chair?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, all right. Okay, so you have the report from the Southern University Law Center. based upon the census data. And as I've said before, we've seen a large increase in enrollment. So based upon the twenty nineteen census data, and and we we do it a little different at the Law Center, but so we want it to kind of be consistent because I I think I wanted to address an issue so that we could make sure that we had it consistently. So the number is six forty nine, and we we use, you'll see paid at census from twenty nineteen versus seven ninety seven paid at census. And we use that at least internally for us because we really hammer the payment because it affects us in in ways that it may not affect the other campuses. So that we we use that number. So given that, you'll see the bulk of this increase overwhelmingly is new first time law students, up one hundred and twenty eight students from a year ago, which is about a fifty five percent increase just in that category, including, and then, of course, we still had an increase with students that were returning from a year ago. The number was four sixteen, and now that's four thirty six. And that's a four point eight one percent. And when you blend those together, it's about a twenty three percent increase over last year. And we are still, in fact, that number changes daily because we are still pushing payment, 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 payment from that standpoint. So it could, it could go up to as much as eight hundred and thirty one students if we are successful in using our various methods to encourage payment. And so you you can see what those numbers are. And frankly, I don't think we can, if you, if you're saying, can I do better, probably the answer is no. I I I would say next year, I would want to see that number come down a little bit because if we we are able to do it now because we have a variety of options in terms of delivery of instruction because of special ABA rules right now in play and special provisions of the U.S. Department of Education and applicable to SACS. I I I don't know if we could physically house that many students inside the Law Center building without getting into a major upgrade in facilities or additional facilities. So, you know, that's basically where we are. It's a good thing, but it presents its challenges in other ways. So, you know, we we are very aware of that. And, you know, I'll answer any questions that board members want to ask or entertain any comments.
Thank you, Chancellor Pierre, we recognize Dr. Tarver. Dr. Tarver?
Oh, of course. Mr. Chancellor, could you give us a breakdown of these numbers by law school program? You have your regular full-time day program. You have an evening program and a couple of others. Could you give us some sense of how those programs are doing in terms of growth and enrollment?
Yes, sir. So with the first, first year new students, we have one hundred new evening students. So when you, when you take the the look at the first time, we have a hundred new evening students. We have about thirty part-time day students, so part-time evening, right around one hundred, part-time day, right at about thirty, and the others are full-time day students. So that's, and what we have done strategically is we have offered that part-time day option and limited that group to thirty or tried to make it thirty, right at about, so that we would have a section that could be by itself if we needed to have that section by itself, and that's kind of how we have done it. And of course, the evening division has continuously grown since its inception a little bit over fifteen years ago. This is almost the largest evening division class, first-year class we've ever had. But as compared to last year, we had seventy two first-time evening division students, and now we have one hundred first-time evening division students. I might add, you you say, well, how are you able to do it, how are you doing it? Well, here's what's happening. We have nine sections of daytime classes. So we actually have six sections that are in person because we had to reduce the capacity. And then we have three sections that are remote. In the evening division, we have both a, on Monday, Wednesday, we have one section that's remote, one in person, and the same thing on Tuesday, Thursday, one section that that's remote and one in person. So we actually have four sections of the evening division. So when you think about that, for the first-year class, there are actually thirteen sections that we have classes being offered just for that division when normally we would have maybe six.
So what's the total enrollment of your law school?
Well, it's seven ninety seven in terms of paid, and so those with schedules, eight thirty one. And that's been the largest in the history of the Law Center.
That's what I thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Tarver. Any other questions, members? Any other questions? All right, two questions, Chancellor Pierre. One, approximately, how many of this number do you think you'll lose through attrition? Particularly in your first year.
Our attrition has been about ten percent in the first-year class. A high would be twenty percent. But I I would say, just looking at the numbers from the first-year class, because that's where majority of the attrition occur, I would say we lose anywhere from thirty five to maybe fifty students through from now until in May. Because attrition because of academic failure. Now, in terms of transfers, I do anticipate we're going to have transfers because many of those students are in their own home states. And I think after a year, because we're going to have to continue this model through May, I would anticipate a higher than average number to say I'm going to stay school, school in state where I am because they just have never moved to Baton Rouge. And they may be, they, it's it's convenient now, but if they have to move to Baton Rouge, then that may change the dynamics.
Got you. Now, over the last, say, four, five, six years, based on a lot of the articles that you send me and just what I've read, the trend has been a serious reduction in the interest for admission to law schools. Is that trend, does this, does this represent a reversal of that trend? Or are we just, we're just doing better than 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 some of these other law centers in terms of attracting students and enroll?
So as far as last year compared to this year, let me just say, it's it's been flat. So we are doing way better than, we just got a report that of the two hundred ABA accredited law schools, we're in the top ten in growth. In other words, we're in the top five percent. We have done exceedingly well. And in fact, over the last year, there have been at least two or three law schools that have just shut down because they did not have the enrollment to sustain their financial viability. So we've just outperformed the market, you know, in a significant way.
Well, congratulations to you, Chancellor, and outstanding work that you and your team are doing there. Not only on this enrollment piece, but I believe the one hundred percent achievement of your performance goes in the in the assessment that was presented by Dr. Penning earlier. Members, any questions or comments regarding the Law Center? Any questions or comments? All right, thank you. Moving now to Southern University of Shreveport, Dr. Ellis.
Morning once again. Let me first start off by accentuating the positives. So year over year, fall to fall, total enrollment.
Dr. Ellis, can you give us?
Yes. Okay.
Put the screen, the data on the screen, please. Okay, thank you.
Can you all see the report?
Okay, it's come, it's populating now, okay. It's up.
Excuse me, so year over year, our hit count is up about three, three percent. And I'll, and and that's positive because it still shows that we're doing some positive things relative to enrollment. I do want to focus on some key areas within that number, however. So one of the things that we have been focusing on is how do we keep the students that we already have? So the slight increase there, as I mentioned earlier, with our online students, we had made some significant strides, particularly in our Associate General Studies and getting a number of those programs one hundred percent online. In utilizing the CARES Act, one of the main areas that we're looking at is how to ensure sustainability long-term. And so we're infusing a number of dollars there to take all of our programs one hundred percent online. And so that number will continue to grow. And extremely proud of Dr. Veronica McKeech and and her staff at SUSLA who have done a phenomenal job of increasing the number of online courses and programs that we have. Unfortunately, we have seen a decline. I'm going to touch a couple of areas in non-traditional students and new first-time students and re-admit students. Those, admit students tend to be those students that have been out for at least a year and and are coming back. Our older population as well as our new population, and we believe for for a couple of reasons, have not come back this fall. So one reason in prep, preparing for COVID nineteen for the fall, we moved our normal start date up about two weeks. Normally, we'd have started at the end of August. We started August twelfth, which is abnormal for us. And just in northwest Louisiana, because of the high rate of COVID nineteen, there's a lot of apprehension in that area about returning to that environment as well as the lack, continued lack of technology to support online learning. And I think thirdly, just because the financial situation, a number of folks have been laid off and they just don't have the financial resources to attend school. And we've tried to address that in a number of ways, but it's still not sufficient. Dual enrollment, we dropped a little bit, but that was a a major miracle, I would say, because as we have experienced decline, our major local school system has seen a decline in enrollment during this time. And so it 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 has made it difficult, but our team really pulled together to at least try to keep that number close to normal. Now, with Connect, we we felt that the new admissions criteria would affect the number of students in Connect in which it has. However, as you see in the next line, with transient non-degree-seeking enrollment, our partnership with Connect and Emerging Jags and the Freshman Academy has helped grow that particular program. So while we lost them in Connect, we are able to, in this partnership in providing the dev ed course, increase the number of students that SUSLA serves on the Baton Rouge and SUNO campuses. And then finally, our international students have continued to dwindle over the past three years as a result primarily of new higher education restrictions that have been put on nationally. I will say this to conclude that the positive that I have seen over the last two months is a significant increase in application. With the CARES Act dollars, we have really flooded the northwest Louisiana market and surrounding markets with advertising both digitally, billboards and commercials. And we're actually tracking now, we have significantly more applications in the pool than we did last year at this time. In addition to that, we have our Term B, our second term for the fall, starting in about a week. And students are continuing to enroll there. And as Dr. Penning mentioned, the final semester enrollment count is the final number that we'll really be looking to really understand where our budget is as well as our true enrollment. So if you have any questions, I'll take those now.
Any questions, members?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gillen?
Yes, Chancellor, just looking at your report here, as I'm seeing, it would appear, I'm looking at your bottom line, it would appear with the three thousand twenty five students that you have that your revenue, or revenues, I should say, should at least be remaining steady, if not actually increasing. But that's not the case. As I said, it appears from looking at the financial report that you're looking at a one point one revenue shortfall, and I'm looking on the sheet here. And I'm trying to, and I think I figured it out. You've got a couple of areas in here that are not revenue generating for you. For instance, the high school, I'll I'll pause to Mr. Jim when I ask my question. So the Chancellor can can answer these for clarification. For instance, the high school dual enrollment, as I appreciate it, that's basically non-revenue generating. And I'm beginning to get questions in my mind relative to the SUSLA Connect line that you have down there. If indeed, that's where your shortfall is coming. And of course, the transient, I don't really, I don't think I fully understand what that is, but it's a big plug of the numbers you have. Five eighty seven, oh my goodness, my screen went out on, I don't know what that's about. Okay. But can you still hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you and see you.
Okay. Because my screen went out, I can't see you all. But anyway, and the transient numbers. My question, I guess, Chancellor, is what are we going to do in terms of carrying, well, because at the bottom line, it looks as though we're clocking along, we're making great success in terms of student numbers. But as you know, FTEs, they generate revenue, and that's not happening. I I'll close right there, Chancellor, give you a chance to jump in.
Right, so so thank you for pointing that out. As many of us know, the dual enrollment population does not generate the same level of revenue as other populations. It's significantly less. So that is, so in addition to those numbers going down, the fact that they don't generate as much revenue is problematic. However, we look at that as a positive in that these are future SUSLA students. And so hopefully, that will pay off in future years. The SUSLA Connect program, as I mentioned, is down significantly and definitely their revenue losses there, both from tuition and the SUSLA Connect fees that we would normally charge there. And a lot of those students are being served as transient students. However, because of that partnership, the same level of revenue is not being achieved from those students. And I know the financial report is coming up, but you can be rest assured that at SUSLA, our financials will be on par. There are a number of things in planning for this upcoming year that we put in place to ensure that if enrollment did drop, we would have the enough revenue to more than cover us throughout this academic year.
Okay, but we have clarification too, Mr. Chair, Chairman, and Chancellor. You know, I've stated all along, we're all into unplotted ground here. I've stated all along, we're all into unplotted ground here. And I've said it previously, that indeed, we're going to have to give President, I know, and these Chancellors, as we use in golf jargon, we're going to have to give you guys a mulligan to some extent. But I'm just wondering, you know, with this kind of, you're providing the service to a disproportionate number of students, but it doesn't appear as though you're being reciprocated in terms of the finances or the revenues that we're going to need to, to keep this operation running up here. That's the point I'm trying to make.
Gotcha.
I would imagine, Dr. Ammons, I'm going to have the same royal when I get to your campus. That's it. That's basically my observation, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gillum. Any other questions, comments, members? Any questions, comments? Okay. Here we thank you, Dr. Ellis, and we move now to Dr. Ammons, Southern University of New Orleans. Dr. Ammons, if you give us just a moment for cloth to load the report.
I can't get my.
You may need to refresh your screen, Mr. Gillum.
I think I'm back up now. Yeah. At least I can see you all.
Right.
We can see you.
Okay. The document is, is up. Dr. Ammons. Dr. Ammons, we can't hear you. Let's see. I see you, but we can't hear you. No, we can't. We still can't hear you. No, sir. If we could read lips, we'd be doing great, but.
I'm going to call Dr. Ammons on the cell phone. This is Melva, and then we'll be able to hear him.
Right. Thank you.
This way.
We still can't hear you, Dr. Ammons.
So, Dr. Ammons, if you can hear us, I'm calling you from the cell phone.
Okay. Can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Well, we got this feedback.
We'll do the best we can. Thank you, Dr. Wood.
Okay. I'm going to step away from my computer and see if it'll work.
That's a lot better.
Okay. Can you all hear me okay without the feedback?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. The first thing is that I want to put this enrollment report in context. I went to SUNO in, on November 1st, 2019. One of the biggest problems confronting the university at that time was probation, and of course, financial resources. And then along came COVID-19. COVID was an issue not just for prospective students, but also for our staff in critical areas. In fact, our whole admissions office was impacted by COVID from illnesses to death. Although we had over 2,000 applications for admissions, we were not able to capitalize on that opportunity. But I am pleased to say that our enrollment increase for this year is just under 5%, going from 2309 to 2419. Now, the high school dual enrollment, first time in college students, areas that the university performed well. However, when we look at other categories, there are opportunities, especially as it relates to retention, when you see the decrease in continuing undergraduate students. In terms of graduate students, we have to build the graduate school infrastructure and just redesign the application as well as the admissions process. But those are opportunities for us. And whoever is the next Chancellor of SUNO will have these data to guide them in terms of the opportunities for growth. Criminal justice, social work, and business continue to be the largest majors at the institution. And then, of course, another area is online program enrollment. Currently, SUNO has 100% online program, and that's Museum Studies. And so as the university moves forward, capitalizing on all of the work that has been done to make the transition from face to face to online, hopefully, the university then will develop online programs because of the professional development that has been done with the faculty. And the last thing that I would say, Mr. Chairman, is that we are going to launch an eight-week short semester, beginning the first part of October, which will give us an opportunity to increase the enrollment even further. And so I'll stop there and entertain any questions that members of the board may have.
All right. I'm told Mr. Shorty had questions?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right.
I have a question.
I said your hand.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Smith?
Okay. It appears to me that the high school dual enrollment is what has, or what is keeping SUNO afloat at this point. And that's where the funds are minimal, I think I heard him say. So how many, I would like to know, how many classes do you have online that you can actually get a degree? Did I hear you say one, and that was Museum Studies?
Correct.
Okay. So that means that we have a shortfall there as well. What, what does it look like as far as the online, because that seems to be a weakness? And along with our high school dual enrollment, which has really brought us up, how do you plan to handle that as far as the finances are concerned?
Well, we have been very conservative in our budgeting. And the information that Mr. Gillum referred to, we have placed budget or funding in, in a category that is not available for spending. We need to see what the final enrollment is going to be, and also in terms of paid students, before we release any additional funding to the campus. So our budget has a contingency in it. And those funds that appear to be a shortfall are in that contingency budget so that we can determine what our eventual spending would be based on the actual revenue that we collect.
Mrs. Smith?
Thank you.
That completed your comments, Mrs. Smith?
Yeah, it does at this time.
Dr. Tom.
Yes, Dr. Ammons, I heard you say that one of your most successful programs is the online Museum Studies program. And I recognize that the emphasis within our institutions has largely been focused on both graduate and undergraduate degree programs. But you're in an area in New Orleans that is exceptional in the state of Louisiana because of the very large tourist industry and the types of businesses and attractions that support that. And I'm speaking now of the possibility of taking your Museum Studies program a step farther. And that would be to develop professional certificate training programs for literally hundreds of people who work in the interrelated industry, those who work at museums, and there are many museums down there. There are lots of arts and crafts exhibitions in which we could train docents. Have you examined the possibility of short-term certificate training programs that could generate a real deal of income for the institution?
Well, as a matter of fact, we had a meeting with the faculty on yesterday, where we talked specifically about additional offerings at the institution, especially in the area of certifications, offering programs and educational opportunities in formats like online, where professionals can take advantage of them without stopping their professional or their family lives. And so there are plans for that. But I want to just say something because I am with you, with SUNO being in the state's largest city, and having an enrollment of less than 2,500, really doesn't make a lot of sense. But I want to reinforce the fact that SUNO is not out of the woods. SUNO's financial status is still very fragile. And we have to take care as we move forward in terms of developing or plans to develop new programs in the face. One of the reasons that SUNO's fiscal status was noticed by Sykes was because we did a substantive change, where we asked for a new degree program, a doctorate in social work. And so it has to be a process that is tempered by the reality of the fiscal situation. But that's not to say that we are not going to plan in those things that we can do without having to do such a change like online certificates, et cetera. The university, I think, would be, would be encouraged to pursue those paths. But, but I agree with you. I mean, we have a new museum, this opening in the Arts and Humanities building. There are art donations that are coming in to the institution. It's certainly an area of opportunity.
I might add to that, that when you're speaking of doctoral programs, the Museum Studies program should be ripe for the consideration of a doctorate in that field. I do not believe that there's a single university in the state of Louisiana that offers a doctorate in that area. And so I view to believe would be useful to consider that possibility as something can be done relatively soon, building on the strengths of your existing faculty, of course, and the existing program.
Question.
Did I respond to that?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Smith, just one second. Let, let Ammons respond to Dr. Tom's comment, question, and then we'll go to you. Dr. Ammons?
Okay. In, in response to the question about a doctorate in Museum Studies, again, I'll go back to, to my statement. It is something that because of the successful master's program, it makes a lot of sense to move toward a doctorate in Museum Studies. But again, I would just caution that we do it in an orderly way, that would not jeopardize a fragile fiscal situation that currently exists. But I, I think, as we are doing in other areas across the university, we are planning and we're, we're looking at it. And it is definitely an area that we are examining.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
My question was going to be approximately, how many students do you have in the undergraduate program for Museum Studies? And how many students do you have in the graduate program for Museum Studies?
I, I would have to get back with you on that. The online program, as you can see from the data that's on the screen, is that we have 27 students for this fall.
It, it says online program majors, but it doesn't say Museum Studies. That's why I questioned that, because that is a small number. But that's all.
Yes, I'll have to get back with you. Mrs. Smith, was it Mrs. Smith who asked the question?
Yes, yes.
Yes, I'll, I'll get back with you on it.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Dr. Ammons?
Comments, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Gillum.
Well, I'd like to say first of all, Dr. Ammons, congratulations. I don't think I've had a chance to personally speak with you. But congratulations to you, your faculty, your staff, the whole SUNO community down there for the effort on the reaffirmation there for Saks. I thank you for this.
Thank you. And let me just say that a lot of congratulations should go around because it took so many parts of the SUNO village to execute at the right time in order for this to happen. And again, I want to thank this board for your support. All of the things that we brought to you to stabilize the finances at SUNO, you approved. And it made a huge difference with the Sykes visiting team, also with the Board of Trustees of Sykes. So I want to thank you and thank the President for all that you did to support this effort.
D, I'll add to, Dr. Ammons, I'd have to include too, your lovely wife there and the support she obviously gives you. I think it was one, was it Amin, one said, he said, you know, because if, if the wife isn't happy, the whole world isn't happy. So I want to thank her for.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I'll pass that along.
Please do. Please do. Okay, one, one last observation, Mr. Chairman. And I would like to add credence to the, to the passionate comments that the chairman gave regarding online programs, because this appears to be a harvest that we just haven't started playing across the, across the system. I'm looking here at the report here, I think in the fall here, the online program majors, fall 20 there, I think there are 27 there in SUNO. Could we possibly, Mr., I think you did indicate though, Mr. Chairman, that you wanted a systems-wide report regarding the status of these online programs, which would be inclusive of everybody, all five units, right, sir?
Yes, sir. And I was going to make that clear again, Mr. Gillum. Thank you for bringing that up. Yes, I would like this to be system-wide.
Thank you. That's a teller to my comments, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, members? Any other comments or questions for Dr. Ammons? All right. Here we thank you, Dr. Ammons, and thank Dr. Ellis, Chancellor Pierre, and Dr. Belton for the reports today. We move now to informational item B, 6B, interim financial reports for, for the system. Mr. McClintock, you have anything to add to the written report? Mr. McClintock? Is somebody there?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you now.
Okay. Good morning. You have the, you provided the interim report as a part of your package. And this report is as of August 31st, 2020. And I was listening. And I was listening during the meeting. This report does not completely reflect what the registration revenue actually is because at the time the report was being prepared, the campus was continuing to register their students. What we plan to do is to provide a more complete report as of, when we provide the report for, as of June 30th, September 30th. In addition to that, based on the report that you have though, I have discussed this report with the chief financial officers for each campus. And the areas that you brought out, I can say from the report that you have that the, the boarding system, Baton Rouge Campus, and the definitely Law Center, based on this preliminary information is showing that they are within their revenue target. I also spoke with the New Orleans campuses. And based on the information that was provided to me, and Dr. Ammon said it, that there's a contingency set aside at the New Orleans campus that they are going to look at how they will address their shortfall. I also spoke with the chief financial officer at the Shreveport Campus. And we are looking at the shortfall, and we don't know what the total is going to be once all the numbers are in. But I can assure you that we will look at it. And at the next report, we will be able to provide a more accurate report, a permanent report that actually reflect, reflects what the real income is. And that's my report. I will address any questions you may have.
Members? Any questions, any comments? All right, hearing none, we will go now to item 6C, medical marijuana update. Dr. McMean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will defer to Dr. Snowden, who will give a very, very brief report.
Good morning. Thank you, Dr. McMeans. I would like to first begin by thanking our alumni and stakeholders for your support of the medical marijuana program. Since my last report given last month, last board report, we have seen an increase in demand for our product. I would like to say that since the launch of our first TH product approximately three months ago, we have developed 10 products. Two of those are topicals for localized pain. Eight of those are tinctures, which are to be ingested, and those are at varying concentrations. Now, of these 10, eight have been approved thus far by the regulator with two in the testing phase right now. Excuse me. We also have two additional products that are in the development phase. I did discuss these last month, but that's our metered dose inhaler and also our gelatin-based chewable. So those are coming on board. Now, for those of you, because we have had some people who don't want the THC products, we do offer four CBD products that were initiated or launched in January. And we also have a bath bomb product that's coming available as well. So it's going to be a soaking item. So since the beginning or our first launch in January, we will have 16 products. So we are pleased with that and the development and also with Aleiro's participation in this program. Now, I would like to apologize because on last call, I did state that I will provide information to you guys regarding those products. But due to advertising restrictions, we are not allowed to place any of this information on the university's website. But if you would visit the SU Ag Center's website, you will see a list of pharmacies that we currently have products in. So I encourage you to do that. Also, you will find my contact information on that website. So if you have any specific questions, please contact me with those. This concludes my report, and I'll take any questions that you have at this time.
Members?
Sir?
No, I was asking if any board member had a question or comment. Members, any questions or comments? Questions or comments? Hearing none. Thank you, Dr. Snowden. Thank you, Dr. McMeans.
Thank you.
We go now to informational item 6D, facilities, planning, project updates. And before Mr. Guillory comes forward, I do have a comment that was submitted for this item from Dr. Mustafa Elasar. I apologize if I mispronounced that. The public comment is as follows. What is the status of the built-out at Natural Science Building at SUNO? The physics lab and the research lab do not have enough internet connections. We have requested more connections. Mr. Guillory?
Uh, chairman, committee members, on that particular question, that's a in-house solution that's going to be taken care of through the IT department of the New Orleans campus. That wasn't a part of the bailout project. And that's one of the projects that's normally taken care of in-house for IT communications.
Okay.
And that, Mr. Derek James can give more prudent information on that through the Vice Chancellor of Finance.
Okay.
All right, I will proceed with the report, starting with the Agriculture Department, with the Agriculture projects. And we have some great news pertaining to the AO Williams renovations, Phase 1. We were approved of $1.6 million to proceed with planning and construction. So, the contract, excuse me for a second, power is low. The, the contract has been signed with the engineers to proceed with planning the project to prepare the construction bid documents for bidding. We also received $5.6 million for Phase 2 of AO Williams Hall pertaining to deep brick in the building and mechanical system and water integrity provisions for that particular building. And we should have selection board meeting with Facilities Planning Control in November. To the Baton Rouge Campus, we, we received notification that we will have the selection board meeting in November for the new science complex, which is approximately $48 million. So we are looking forward to starting that project off sometimes next year with the planning process after the selection. Also, the Ruffin Paul Central Plant Project is moving along rapidly. We're about 98% completed with that project. The ADA compliance drainage project near west side of the Law Center, where the street is closed off because of our internal drainage problems and erosion problems, that project is about 90%, 90% completed. Also, the ravine project, as I stated in the last report, we're back in progress and we're looking at the end of April to complete that project. Also, Fisher Hall, we received an additional $2 million for the renovation of Fisher Hall, where we had $6.5 million. Now we have $8.5 million. And we can proceed with the first floor with additional improvements to the labs and other accommodations with equipment and fume hoods and so forth in that facility. Progress is being made with the demolition of Jones Hall, Architecture West, and La Vantia Hall for the demolition of those projects. And we do have a few remaining projects that FPNC held those up only because of the bids have increased with demolition costs. And as we finish these other projects, we will go back and put the other projects out for bids. Also, some other great news is that with the Lab School, one of the phases, we are moving into, from design development into construction documents to bid the Lab School renovations, which is approximately $740,000, along with receiving approval to proceed with designing the addition of the Lab School and renovation for approximately $8 million. We will find out more information on that come October after the bond sale. Stewart Hall for the Baton Rouge Campus, tremendous progress is being made on that under the direction of Mr. Kesty Weir with the Baton Rouge Campus. So if, if you take a tour of it, you will see amazing progress with the renovations of that project. Moving on to Law Center, Phase 1 HVAC upgrades, in communicating with Mr. Vice Chancellor Terry Hall, progress is in the planning phase for the project we have bid out. So hopefully, construction will start soon for the mechanical upgrades in that building. And then we will move into Phase 2 for approximately another $400,000 that would be handled through FPNC. On the New Orleans Campus, we're making tremendous amount of progress with the lighting. We're about 90% completed with the lighting, lighting project. We also have been approved to seek additional fund to, to do extra light on one of the, the Lake Campus Street. And so that would put us on about $500,000 in that price range. And then the Arts and Humanities Museum bill out about 90%, 98% completed. And we're looking forward to the display for the museum to seek bidding before the year is out. And the sidewalk project for the campus is out for bids. The Natural Science First and Second Floor bill out Phase 2, approximately $2.7 million, I would say are around 90% completed. October 2020 is the substantial completion date, but because of a number, a number of factors that may be pushed back to November, December. On the mechanical system project in the Bassford Administration Building, under the great direction of Mr. Derek James of the SUNO campus, he's doing a super job coordinating with the mechanical contractor and engineers see for that that project is updated. And we would be very excited that, I know the students are going to be very excited when coming back, new mechanical system. So that project is, they are $335,000. And on the Shreveport Campus, bids came in yesterday on a $500,000 mechanical system project. So the base bids were within the AFC budget amount, and we are looking to proceed with alternate number one to start that project off. Mr. Chairman, that, if there are no questions, that will complete my report for today.
Thank you, Mr. Guillory. Members, are there any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, thank you. We go now to informational item 7, other business, and we recognize Dr. Ellis.
Good morning. Again, just wanted to note to the board that Sussler will be hosting virtually our onsite Committee for SACS next month. And part of that process is a quality enhancement plan. Just wanted to let you know the title of that is Jaguar to the Core: Cultivating General Education Success in Math and English. And we'll be forwarding each board member a copy and, and subsequent meeting, doing a brief presentation on the QEP. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ellis. Before we entertain a motion for adjournment, I just want to put two items on your radar screens, members. One, to prepare yourselves for an in-person meeting in October. It's more likely than not that we will be in person in October. Also, as you know, we pushed back the evaluations for the chances as well as Dr. Belton until we could have a face-to-face meeting. That process is underway. And so we hope to email early next week the evaluation instruments for the President Chancellor. And it's our intent to consider them, I believe with the other chancellors that Dr. Belton is working on now at the October, at the October meeting. And we may split them up between October and November. But just be on, on alert for that. Members, are there any other matters anyone would like to offer? Any other matters? Any other matters? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, I move forward.
Right, thank you, Dr. Tom.
Second.
Standing adjourned. Thank you all.